I'd like to welcome everyone to the July 9th special meeting of the Guyman City Council. At this time, I'd like to invite Pastor Carol Lamar from the Panhandle Presbyterian Church to do the invocation. Please stand with us.
Will you pray with me, please? Father God, we come before you this night, full of thanks for all the blessings that you bestowed upon us. We ask another blessing of you, Father, on us tonight as we serve your kingdom by serving the city of Guyman. Help us, Father, to appreciate the freedom we have to govern ourselves and to be always grateful to the young men and women and all of their families who make that freedom a reality every day. Be with us as we conduct the business of the city. Give us, Father, a chance to be servant through our will and a chance to be wise in our decisions. Be with us and give us confidence and wholeness to choose if a choice is necessary to choose the way that is best for your kingdom and for the city and for everyone who lives here. We thank you again, Father, for all that we have, knowing that your confidence is deeper than you. In the name of your Son who died, but we look there.
Mr. Alvedras, I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call this meeting to order. Item two, attendance roll call.
Livinggood?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Swager?
Here.
Alvedras?
Here.
Egger? Hoffman?
Here.
Mr. Petty?
Here.
Mr. Wagner?
Item three, public comments and announcements.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Today, PTCI was very generous by honoring the city employees with a free lunch. A number of employees took advantage of it, and we just want to publicly recognize PTCI for what they do for this community and specifically what they did for the city employees today.
Thank you. Any other public comments or announcements? Okay. Item four, approval of the consent agenda.
I've got a couple of questions concerning the consent agenda. One, since Mr. Mitchell isn't here to answer some of them, I'll just ignore that. But you look at the consented agenda, you've got invoices, you have resolutions, you got a work.
Pardon me, Larry. The thing to do would be to move to pull the items from the consent agenda, and then the remaining items are voted on, and then you immediately discuss those items you want to.
Okay. I'd like to pull item number 4.8, the real estate lease, with E-911 for discussion later.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
You've got four ayes.
Thank you.
Okay.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda minus the item number 4.8.
Second.
Have a motion, a second.
Peterson?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
You've got four ayes.
Mr. Petty, would we just go to 4.8 now?
Yes.
Okay. Item 4.8, approve the real estate lease agreement between the city of Guyman and the Texas County 911 Trust Authority for the Consolidated 911 Dispatch Center.
I think... Mr. ...
As you guys can see, there's a proposal for the real estate lease between the 911 for the Consolidated Dispatch Center and the city of Guyman for the remaining part of the building that OHP is not leasing. The only thing that we wanted to see if there was a possibility on the lease, there is a 30-day out clause, so if the city of Guyman for any reason in the future would want to no longer lease the building or something would change, we would wonder if it would be possible to have a longer length of time just because it's almost impossible to stand... It would be impossible to stand up a dispatch center in 30 days, and the idea would be to not have any interruption of services to the public for the public safety operation. And just wanted to see if maybe 120 days or 180 days could be looked at as an option on.
Okay.
How long have we been in this process to get you into the building?
At least, well, we started with OHP and then through that process found out that the city does own the building, so that took a little longer. Since the city has found out they've owned it, we've been working probably since January to get a lease agreement.
So you're looking at six to eight months already, and you plan on being in by October 1st?
Right. And we do, if at all possible, need it approved now just because we've got a due date for opening up the new center, install, and we're going to have some remodel work, some other items that have to be done on that building, and that's why we asked for it to be on the agenda for this meeting. So we really can't do any work in there as a trust unless we have a lease agreement saying that we are going in that building.
So you're comfortable with 120 days?
Yes.
You guys good with that?
I'm good with that.
I make a motion that we amend the contract to 120 days on termination.
Second.
Have a motion, a second.
Swager?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
You've got four ayes.
Item five, approval... Approve the financial advisor, municipal advisor grant with municipal finance services.
This item is part of the other two that you have that are following contractual services agreement for us to entertain the GO bond that we're going to be discussing here over the next two items. And Alan Brooks is here representing the firm that will be assisting us in that issue. So we recommend approval.
Now, under the fees, is there a monthly fee?
Typically, those fees are based on the issue. Alan, if you want to add to that, but typically when you issue the bond and the fees are calculated at the time of issue.
Okay.
These agreements are contingent fee agreements, all right, both for our firm and for municipal finance services, who's the financial advisor. Technically, the resolution, the next item, authorizes everything, okay? So we kind of got this one on here twice, but this is the agreement for municipal finance services. The financial advisor, Rick Smith, has come up here and met with you all a few times, I think, regarding the transaction. His proposed fee on the transaction is 1% of the principal amount of debt issued plus expenses of, I believe, $4,000 per transaction. All fees are contingent on the transaction closing. So as an example, you move forward, you call the election, and if the voters don't approve it, there's no transaction. Let's say you move forward, the voters do approve it, you don't issue the bonds. There's no fee. And the fees, it's contemplated right now that there would be probably three transactions over a six- or seven-year period. Those fees would be 1%, as an example, of $4 million on the first transaction, et cetera. So they're all contingent fees. They get paid out of the proceeds of the transaction when and if the transaction is closed.
That's what my concern was, is what happens if it didn't pass and if you were stuck?
You don't owe any of the professionals in the transaction anything if the transaction is not approved by the voters.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the financial advisor municipal advisor agreement with municipality financial services.
Second.
Have a motion, a second.
Peterson?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
You've got four ayes.
Item six, discussion and possible action on approval of resolution number 1909 of the council of the city of Guyman, Oklahoma, authorizing the calling and holding of a special election in the city of Guyman, state of Oklahoma, on the 10th day of September 2019 for the purpose of submitting to the registered qualified electors of said city the question of the issuance of general obligation bonds of Guyman in the amount of not to exceed the sum of $10 million to be issued in series to provide funds for the purpose of constructing, reconstructing, repairing, improving, rehabilitating existing streets, roads, intersections in the city, including but not limited to signage, sinalization, lighting, sidewalks, bike paths, landscaping, related drainage improvements, driveway reconstruction, and other related improvements, all to be completed with or without the use of other funds and levying and collecting annual tax in addition to all other taxes upon the taxable property in Guyman for the payment of the interest and principal on said bonds, providing for election procedures, authorizing professional service agreements in connection with the issuance bond, and containing other provisions related thereto.
Yes. Just as a point of background, this is a subject matter that we've been talking about for at least a year and a half, two years, is how do we approach the construction, reconstruction of a lot of our streets. You know, we started out about two years ago doing a survey. We had a consulting firm come in and do an analysis of all our street and provided a report showing us current condition, and at that time, their report suggested that the city set aside about $1.2, $1.5 million a year to address reoccurring street issues. And obviously, you can't fund that through your general operating budget. So the option here would be to consider the GO bond, and we're proposing a $10 million GO bond that would be split into three issues. The initial issue would be four million followed by two $3 million issues staggered over the following six years. So you'd start out issuing four million, and then two years later, three, and two years later, three million. And I've given each of you a memorandum that shows you, gives you a calculation of what the tax requirements would be, property tax requirements would be for someone, a property owner who has a house that's valued at $100,000, $150,000. And by splitting the issue into three pieces, that minimizes the impact on the homeowner. The other thing I would say is that a lot of communities in Oklahoma have gone through this process, issued GO bonds, and as those bonds get paid off, they reissue and have sequential elections, and so you build a long-term capital improvement program with very little impact over the long term to the property owner. It's a great way to address capital improvement projects and needs of the city, and we recommend approval of the question, of the resolution. If you have any questions over the financial calculations in that memo, Alan would be happy to answer them for you.
Would he?
Yes, he would. Yeah. I can give you my experience in the city of Lawton. We have done this, and we issue a capital improvement program every five to seven years, and it's worked very well because the, over the long term, that impact is minimal for the property owner. And it gives you the reserves that you need to address capital improvement programs, whether it's streets or water sewer. And certainly, once you get this initiated, then you obviously would have other options for funding other types of capital improvements.
But our main focus is going to be the streets?
Yes. And included in the resolution, one of the requirements of the GO bond is that you identify at least 70% of the money and allocate those dollars to a list of streets, and in the resolution is included a list of streets. One of the issues here for us is that we are basing those costs on reconstruction, given estimates from Department of Transportation. So at this point in time, we do not have a set of construction plans to base our estimates on. So if the bond issue is approved, then the next step would be to hire Cardinal Engineering or some other engineering firm to do the actual design work for a street, and then you'd get a much better feel of what those costs are going to be. Some of those streets listed may only require an overlay versus reconstruction, so you might save some money there. And obviously, the other 30% is discretionary fund that the city can allocate to other street projects, but it has to be done with the same, in the same venue. You wouldn't be able to use that money to do something different than what's being called for in the election question.
Okay.
So your estimates on this, for instance, 4th Street, Ellison Highway 54, estimated $500,000, what's that?
It was based on the number of linear feet and a cost per linear foot, and I got those estimates from the Department of Transportation that they use for estimating their projects. But until you actually do the engineering and you bid the project, you really don't know what that... I think that's a ballpark number, but you really don't know what the true number will be until you actually award a contract for that street.
My concern is that you don't have anything down for water lines or sewer lines or gas lines that's underneath that we might have to replace.
Well, that would be part of the design part of it. Those would be eligible costs under the program.
But they're not listed.
No, it wouldn't. It wouldn't until you do the engineering, until you determine the scope of your project, until you know what you may have to acquire some right-of-way or some easements to relocate utilities, for example. You won't know that until you actually do the design of the street.
Yeah. And another problem I have is, you know, we've got sidewalks, bike paths, landscaping, driveway instructions, and things like that, and I don't want to spend another $1,300 per tree on landscaping.
At the time, the design work is done, that would be, those design, construction plans would be brought back to the council for your approval, and you could amend those any way you see fit.
Okay. I kind of wish Mr. Mitchell was here, or Mr. Wagner and Mr. Egger were here to put their input in on this, but they're not. So that's all the questions I had. I appreciate it.
Okay, you're welcome.
And it includes proposition number one, street projects, utility relocation. So I would assume that would be gas, water.
Okay. Yeah, related drainage improvements, that type of stuff. I mean, it's just going to have to come back to surveying the property and then determining what needs replaced once we get that done by the engineer, correct?
But it's, you know, streets, the streets and everything, the infrastructure in most of our community has been allowed, you build it and you don't take care of it. And then all of a sudden, it's war out, and now we're to that point. As the saying goes, it's time for us to invest in ourselves again.
Are you anybody concerned about now and in two months, having the election? Are we going to be able to get this out to the public in two months as far as why we're doing it and the cost?
Well, I think we can do that. I think that's an individual question.
Yep. I think it's doable. Okay. As far as education and everything, I mean, it's pretty straightforward. He said 70% would be for street infrastructure.
You've got to designate 70% of the project money to projects, don't you, Larry? You have to designate 70% of the money to actual projects.
It is laid out in the resolution. You've already designated that 70%. So you have, the other 30% is discretionary.
But it also, you have cost overruns, but if you save a lot of money, then you can expand the scope of the whole project.
Correct. Correct. And you have eight weeks.
But again, it all has to be street work, street-related, so.
Is there anything that says we have to abide by the study that was done two years ago as far as the streets addressed? Because they graded each and every street in Guyman.
The only thing is that we use that to give you that first list of streets. You can have some leeway there.
Right, but we probably want to stick to that. I mean, it was a professional study done by...
You have to do the streets listed, okay? In other words, I mean...
That's what I was asking.
The Bond Proceeds Act is an Oklahoma statute that basically says you have to identify with some level of specificity the projects you're going to do. And the projects we had, and they have to represent basically 70, at least 70% of the proceeds to be utilized. So we've listed in excess of 70%, a little over 70% of the projects. If these projects can be done for less money, that's okay. That means there's more dollars available for other street projects. But if it takes more money, then that eats into maybe some of that 30%. But we need to definitely do the streets that were listed. The remaining money that's available after that is, again, discretionary, but it's streets and related expenditures.
Under the proposal, would there, would this be going out for bid?
Are you talking about the bonds?
Right.
Or the street?
The street part.
The street work, it'd be your competitive bidding act like you would other municipal improvements.
We're not tied down to, we don't have to go, okay?
No.
And the initial list of streets were identified in that study as being some of the worst.
Correct.
So that's where we started from.
Right. And that's a good start because those are, if you've driven them, they are the worst streets, so.
Thank you.
And the one other thing I might mention is, it also doesn't, you've identified those streets. You have the ability, should the option present itself, that, let's say, Hurliman, for example, that street is a city-county, doesn't prevent you from having other parties participating in these projects. So, you know, that's a project where you could get some funding through the county to help with that type of a street or other collector's streets. You might get discretionary money from the Department of Transportation as well.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I make a motion that we approve resolution number 1909 of the council of the city of Guyman, Oklahoma, authorizing and calling and holding of a special election in the city of Guyman, state of Oklahoma, on 10th day of September 2019. Item six.
I'll second.
I have a motion, a second.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
You've got four ayes.
Item seven, conduct a public hearing regarding the city's grant application with the Oklahoma Department of Tourism for land and water conservation grant of $500,000 to help fund a portion of the Nash Soccer Complex.
Good evening. I gave you a little summary, the executive summary of the grant that we're applying for. The grant requires that we hold or conduct a public hearing to allow anyone to voice their approval, disapproval of the suggestion that we file the grant application. So I would ask that the mayor and the council conduct a public hearing, and at the close of the public hearing, then we can proceed with a discussion about approving, authorizing the city manager to file the grant application for $500,000. The project budget would be a million because it's a 50% match. So the budget for the application would be $1 million. Half of that money would come from the grant, and that $1 million, we believe, would be enough to finance the construction of one soccer field and the concession stand restroom facility for the Nash Soccer Complex. We selected, if you look through the material, there's a location map there, and we identified field number three, which is the field, the southernmost field at the end of the parking lot. And the reason that we identified that field is that the timing of the application is a lot different than perhaps our construction of the initial phase of the project. So you have to be careful not messing up the project and making delays in the project that would otherwise go forward. So we selected field number three so that that can be, I guess for a better, or lack of a better word, carved out from the rest of the project so that the timing will not create issues for us with the balance of the project. And there are other grant applications out there that if we are successful with this one, there's another grant application that would allow us to secure dollars for the trail, the trail around the perimeter. There are other grants out there that might provide lighting for one of the fields.
Or splash pad.
Or... I'm still working on that. I'm trying to figure out how to reuse the water, you know? Do the splash pad and reuse the water to irrigate the fields. I'm trying to figure out how to do that one. But anyway, this is our first attempt, and hopefully we'll have some success with it. But, you know, from our perspective, this is a very, very worthwhile endeavor, and since we have half the project money raised already, I think we've got a good chance of being successful.
Good to go.
Thank you.
I was going to ask you, Mr. Mitchell, how long does it take to hear back?
We're not quite sure because this is, if you see on the cover, this is a land and water conservation grant, which is basically a pass-through from the National Park Service.
Okay.
So the state reviews, they have criteria, they have a checklist, they go through the checklist and say, "We approve this application for consideration." And then once we get the state's approval, then it goes to the National Park Service. They do a review which includes an environmental assessment, which takes six to eight weeks. And then you go through the funding cycle. So it's a federal funding cycle, so that might be six more months. So that's why we picked that field, because we didn't want it to interfere with the balance of the project. But to answer your question, four to six months, maybe.
Okay.
Yeah. We will know fairly soon at the state level whether we're successful. It's going to be just the processing after that.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. This time, we'll conduct a public hearing over item seven.
I make a motion that we conduct a public hearing regarding the city's grant application with the Oklahoma Department of Tourism for land and water conservation grant of $500,000 to help fund a portion of the Nash Soccer Complex. Item seven.
Have a second.
What's on the agenda? We don't need a motion.
And we don't need...
Any input from anyone in the crowd?
Anybody have any input?
I would like to point out that in your packet, you have a letter of support from the university, a support letter, letting the state know that the University of Panhandle State has started a soccer program, and they have a soccer field, but they're unable to hold tournaments. They had a nine-team tournament, and they weren't able to do much with it because they only had one field available. So, you know, part of this is, I think, a tremendous economic development activity for the community and for the region, not just quality of life issue.
I would like to reiterate, we, the University of Panhandle State University strongly supports this. We tried to convey in our letter of support that this really is a tourism and economic development issue for us, as well as an investment of the university into Guyman. We are investing money into this project as well. We think it's very important. It's a way for our university to connect with the community. Just with the two teams having a camp this summer, we've gotten tremendous support from the community. We really think this is going to be a positive influence in our overall region. Like was said, we hosted a soccer tournament last year. We had to limit it to nine teams because we only had the field for a day. This year, we're going to try and get 18 teams in, but we're playing half-sized pitch, so not as competitive. But there's such a desire that we want to be able to accommodate that in our region. We really think that you guys could keep this thing busy almost every weekend if you wanted to. So we look forward to helping you in any way we can to get this done, and we appreciate that your efforts in trying to get this project completed.
Thank you.
Hi. Just wondering, I'm not familiar with these types of grant applications. Are there any stipulations for how the grant can be used or the specific property that's funded, the way that we fund the project has to be used in the future, or any other guidelines that come with the application and if we were to receive the money?
Okay. Mr. Mitchell, do you know the answer to that?
Well... Well, if the, if the grant's approved, obviously you gotta build a soccer field. But, I mean, there's no requirements or stipulations about how the city manages that field. They do ask you for a long-term maintenance plan and a management program, but that's up to the council and the city to determine how the fields will be used, how the fields are scheduled, the amount of play, that sort of thing. And, and I think with a five-field soccer complex, that's gonna be a very interesting, uh, thing for the city to have to deal with. And I, we would suggest that maybe we look at some sort of a, an association or, or a sports, um, committee to actually handle the scheduling and, and management of the, of the fields once they're built. But there isn't any stipulation, uh, it's not restricted, I guess, to say. It's not restricted for use only by youth groups or adult leagues, or, that's a determination that's made by the, the council.
If, if I may, No Man's Land Park was, was built with, uh, No Man's Land Park out there by there?
Yes.
That was built with a USDA grant like this. That's what funded it years ago.
Yeah, right.
Hi there. The only stipulation when we go after grant funding from the federal government for parks is that it is designated as a public park. So regardless of if it's, you know, actual park equipment, or if we're using it as a soccer field, as long as it's the designation for a public park in the area, and that's all it could ever be. And then as long as we sign, uh, Mr. Mitch would sign saying that that's what we intend it to be, then that's the only major stipulation that we have on that.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay. Item nine, six.
Eight.
Sorry. Item eight, discussion, possible action to approve the submission of a land and water conservation grant application to the Oklahoma Department of Tourism.
Make a motion that we, make the application.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
Swager?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Item nine, sixty-day review of dilapidated, uh, property located at two thousand three northeast street.
I believe Sean's in training.
We have photos of.
You got some?
Sure.
Thank you.
We did conduct a hearing, and they were waiting for the roll-offs. They do have the roll-offs, but she is, um, working with volunteers to help with the process. I think that she was given a little bit more time, um, on the hearing side of it, to help with the process.
You think another thirty days?
Yeah. I've, I've driven by it. They're making really good progress.
Yeah, so. You can tell they are.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Drive by there quite a while.
You think another thirty days would be?
Yes, sir. That would be appreciated.
Special. Okay.
I have, we have a carpenter working on the, one of the houses now, on the inside of it. He's here, if y'all would like to speak to him.
Okay.
I've been doing the work that you see there. I'm sure y'all noticed the difference, didn't it?
Yeah.
I started working on the interior of the house, where the fire damage was, and ripping that out. I talked to the city inspector, and he said, "As long as we get the fire damage taken care of, and electrical taken care of, it'd be okay to, for it to move back in," I mean, "as soon as that is taken care of."
Okay.
Okay.
With the, I imagine he'll re-inspect that, won't he?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
You want a thirty-day extension? Is that what?
Probably be.
It's thirty and.
So we do thirty and review it after thirty days to see where we're at? Probably fair, if you guys are okay with that.
Yes, sir.
It's fine with me.
Working as fast as I can.
Yeah, no, we understand.
Yeah. We'll just see it update in thirty days and see how you're doing. How's that?
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job. Item ten, discussion regarding the disposition of the old library.
There's no scheduled action. We wanted to update you that we have hosted, uh, two parties, one public, nonprofit, one private, at the library. We, uh, toured with them and their people, the facility, uh, currently. We do have an appraisal on the property that's valid. Um, so, just kinda let you know that the interest is there. Uh, we're hoping somebody buys it soon. But, um, other than that, um, open answer any questions you may have, but, uh, we just wanna let you know that there's parties interested. We are showing it. We are accommodating people.
I saw the sign.
Yeah.
It's up there. Is it in the, is it on, uh, any media, newspaper?
It is not. It is simply a sign in that, um, you know, we, we don't have an MLS here in Guyman, but I think within due time, if we don't get, uh, any offers, per se, true offers, in three weeks, four weeks, I think we will start a heavy marketing approach, as we have. We've had a pretty good, um, success rate on social media, and so we'll, we'll look at those alternatives. But we wanted to let you know what's happening there.
I know the chamber made some comment. They would kinda like maybe a, a lease-purchase agreement. Have we looked into any of that?
I don't, Mitch is heading that. Uh, I know we have not received anything to that extent. We're certainly open to that. And I think, uh, anything that brings that building back into the scheme of, of use is great.
They could sell their building and buy it?
I didn't hear you.
He said, "Sell their building and buy it."
Yeah.
That's an idea.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
So, when properties like this go up for sale, uh, that are owned by the city, so how long are you guys gonna allow it to be on the market before then you would move to, like, an auction? Because, I mean, there's a lot of, I mean, there's a lot of private property that stays on the market for years, and obviously we stop, you know, the city and taxpayers will be responsible for the upkeep, um, of the facility if no one's using it. So, is there, like, a timeline set?
There's no timeline. You, you know, you can take your time to market it in a manner you think proper. The only obligation you have is, when the property is sold, is to obtain fair market value, guardians of the public money, so.
As long as it takes.
Thank you. Item eleven, discussion regarding dilapidated fencing.
I know this was, I was gonna say, this, this was put on for you, so.
I know, I just.
Can you introduce yourself first?
Oh, sorry. Sorry, you know. Rebecca Robbins. Um, so, I guess this is kinda, you guys looked at me, my issue, uh, I, that I brought up the last, uh, council meeting, just because we were discussing about dilapidated and abated property, and I felt like that fencing, because you do have to obtain a permit to build one on your property, and it is part of your property, and it does add value to your home, should also be under that, at least, address somewhere in ordinances, uh, that it has to be.
Currently, I don't, I don't think you need a permit for a fence, currently.
Yeah, I, we had to get one when we built our fence. There is a specific permit, um...
You have to get a permit, but there's no fee.
There's no cost.
There's no fee.
But you do have to, and it has to be inspected, and it has to be, it has to meet the city's guidelines.
Right.
Because it has to have, be set back a certain amount, um, for the city access. So there are, I mean, there are rules around how the fencing should be.
Right, right.
And it is a permit. It, it is truly a permit that you obtain. Um, and so I guess I just, um, felt like that that should be addressed, because I think that that is, you know, it, fencing is meant to bring, add value and bring value to homes, but it can also detract from the appeal of our community. And so I think that that should be addressed somewhere, and as we're addressing these ordinances to improve the image of Guyman, so, thanks.
Thank you.
Did you? Yeah. Uh, add a little history. This matter was brought up before council in two thousand eighteen. It was a matter to, to table it based on discussions. We do see a need to update, uh, the fencing ordinance, and not necess, I'm not advocating a fee here, but I do think that there has to be some type of standardization. The setbacks is one thing, um, ensuring that there's access to meters, gas meters and so forth, and, and then just the quality of the build itself. Um, because oftentimes, what we're seeing is when we have these storms, it's almost inevitable that these fences either come down, or a tree falls down on them. And what we don't want to do is have those fences last for a long period of time, that detract from the, uh, aesthetic value of the property, but the safety of, of the public. So, we do think that there is a need to look at this a little bit further and update it. But, again, not advocating a fee, we're just looking to upgrade the quality, uh, and, uh, just the construction as well.
So how many inspections has the city done on fencing in the last three months?
We do a lot. Oh, don't quote me on the number, but it's a weekly occurrence, especially in summer, right now, or in the middle of it. I would, and I, I'm gonna guess, probably about fifteen a month, starting in April, May.
Yeah, I know my neighborhood right now has two fences going up.
And the new ones go up, look fantastic, by the way. They look fantastic.
Does the city write them, uh, say a note saying, "You're good to go," or is it just verbal?
No, it's all documented.
Okay. That's news to me.
Just 'cause you broke the law.
Any other discussion? Item twelve, discussion and possible action on approval of resolution nineteen dash ten, a resolution establishing a building and fence permit fee schedule.
I'm gonna let Mr. Petty answer that. I didn't put it on the agenda.
Yeah. I don't have an update on you on this particular matter, on the fee schedule. I don't. The resolution states, uh, it's really.
Fifteen cents per square foot.
We had, we had this item on your agenda probably three or four months ago, and, and our building inspector had done a survey of other communities, and I think he provided that survey to you. And out of the community survey, our recommended fee structure was sort of middle of the road or average in those communities. Uh, we recommend approval because our current, uh, fees are ridiculously low, and I can't remember the number, but for the hotels being built, I think their permit fee was under two hundred dollars or something like that.
And it does say in this, the fence permit and inspection, there's no fee.
Right.
So.
Fifteen cents per square foot is pretty reasonable.
I mean, that, shouldn't that be, shouldn't that be linear fee?
On a fence, it should be linear fee.
Right, there's nothing.
No, there's not gonna be any fee for a fence.
Okay.
So, this is just for, like, building, yeah.
Yeah, fencing.
Fence are adding, adding a room to your house.
Right.
Or something, it'd be per square foot.
That's a square foot addition. The fence is a linear foot. That's how that's measured.
So we're still not gonna charge for fencing?
Right.
Just a verbal or a written document?
Yeah, just documentation. They still have to get the permit.
Okay.
So, Rebecca Robbins, again, um, on the building permits, specifically, is that gonna apply, that fifteen, um, cents per square foot? Is that gonna apply to just buildings, uh, or additions that are heated and cooled, so it wouldn't apply to, like, a, a porch or an outdoor structure? Because that actually is defined in, in the set of permit fee schedule and, and ordinances, whether it's the, the structure is.
Per square foot or space.
Whether it is.
I think it would apply to.
Heating and cooled, but I'm saying, is it for outdoor structures?
Also for, uh, like a shed?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think that would be. It would be fifteen cents a square foot.
I think it's covered area.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I wanna make sure that's correct, because I think there were some different, the last time I looked at that, when we applied for some permits, um, there was some differences about whether the, the structure was meant to be attached to your home, heated or cooled, um, versus detached structures.
It's covered by the International Building Code that we have to comply with.
So, that'll be up to the building inspector to, based on what plans are presented, whether or not a permit's required.
Okay.
And then the cost for it, correct? Like, where it falls in, in which category it falls in. I guess I just don't want it to be overly restrictive, right? That there's only a building permit, and then there's not, like, an outdoor-use, non, non-residential type of use, uh, permit as well, I guess is what I'm thinking of. No different than, like, the fencing permit is different.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Any discussion?
I'd like to hear from our building inspector on this, honestly.
We gonna table it?
Table it. Make motion, table option, uh, item number twelve.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second.
Swager?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Item thirteen, discussion on, and approval of ordinance number eight fifty-three, an ordinance of the city of Guyman, Oklahoma, amending section five dash one oh seven of the Guyman Code of Ordinances, providing for building permit, application fees, repealing in all other ordinance and parts of ordinance in conflict herewith, providing for severability and declaring an emergency.
I make a motion that we table off, uh, item thirteen.
Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second.
Swager?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Item fourteen, discussion and possible action to approve ordinance number eight fifty-two, an ordinance amending part ten, chapter four of the Guyman Municipal Code, establishing penalties for failure to supervise minors or contributing to violation of law by minors, providing severability, repealing all ordinance in conflict herewith, and declaring an emergency.
I might speak to that. What triggered?
This, uh, ordinance tracks a state statute, and what triggered it is, in, uh, when we deal with munis, with juveniles in municipal court, and they don't show up, because, and their parents know they don't show up, we, we don't have any, uh, any real hammer to, uh, address the subject. And, and when a, when a juvenile is, uh, assigned community service and doesn't perform, and their parents know they're not performing and take no action, there's no, no way to, to, uh, get the parent's attention. And this ordinance would allow a parent to be fined if they knowingly allow and cooperate with their child in not, uh, coming to city court or, uh, performing community service, uh, in lieu of paying a fine, which in most cases, kids in school can't do. So, that's the intent of this, and it's similar to the, the statute and other, many other cities have enacted this type of ordinance. So, we think it'll be helpful in dealing with, getting the attention of, of, of the juveniles and their parents as well.
I make a motion that we approve ordinance number eight fifty-two, an ordinance amending part ten, chapter four of the Guyman Municipal Code.
Second. I have a motion and a second.
Peterson?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Item fifteen.
Need to make a, make a motion to declare this an emergency?
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
Peterson?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Item fifteen, we will stand adjourned as the Guyman City Council. Uh, we will reconvene as the Guyman Utilities Authority. Call this meeting to order. Item two, approve the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty workers' compensation agreement with the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group, O-MAG.
Sure, this, this is just to renew it.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion.
Second. I have a motion and a second.
Swager?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Item three, reports from city council members.
I had good comments on the fireworks display.
Any other reports?
All I've got is I went, a month ago, I wasn't here, I was at the OML Board of Directors' retreat and also the mayor's summer conference. Should've been there. It was good. The biggest, probably the biggest discussion at the, the conference was about, mainly because of what El Reno went through and all the flooding, was on disaster management, is how did your city react as far as the council, the city manager, whatever. And I think OML's putting together some information and training packages on how to handle a press and things like that.
Any other reports?
I don't have any.
Okay. We'll stand adjourned as the Guyman Utilities Authority. Thank you.